We're recording. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Directors' meetings. Before we begin, I do want to say that we had, we did not hold that second executive session. So that just did not happen. But we also want to add an agenda item to discuss consolidation and that I would say that would become 5A. Do we have a motion to add that?
We have a second.
All in favor of adding that?
Can we vote?
Yes.
You can.
Okay. Uh, now we can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
That's coming.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, next is a public input statement because typically read by our vice chair who was not able to make it. Tonight, do we have someone who will volunteer to read that?
A volunteer.
Okay, then it's going to be read by Lauren.
The first public input session is a 21-minute session with each person having no longer than three minutes in which to make a statement. But a second public input session may be held at the end of the meeting if allowed by the board chair. Speaker will give his/her name, address, and reason for speaking. Public input is designated for district residents, but the board chair may grant non-residents the opportunity to address the board. Statements concerning subject matter that falls under the law regarding executive sessions, for example, matters involving personnel cannot be made during public input. We as a community pledge to treat each other as we wish to be treated. We pledge to seek understanding when there may, when there may be disagreement regardless of the outcomes or opinions. We pledge to move forward with respect, and this is the time for comments as opposed to questions.
Thank you. So we have any public input at this time? No public input. Okay. Next on the agenda is the swearing in and oath of new members.
Okay, so we have two new board members joining us this evening. Both have been sworn in by their respective towns. So we just need to officially have the oath go through this evening for the district. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to hand each of you the copy and there's I do swear or I do affirm. Either way you choose to do it is perfectly fine. Thank you. And what I'm going to do is just start it and then I'm going to stop and you just continue. Okay.
You're gonna do them together?
Yeah, I think we're gonna do them together at the same time.
Okay.
Okay, one, two, three.
I do affirm.
Wait, we're doing it at the same time?
Yes.
Okay. I, Allison Hurley, do affirm that I will faithfully discharge to the best of my abilities and duties incumbent on me as a regional unit board director, we went two different routes, of MSAT 60 according to the Constitution of Maine and laws of this state. This I do under the pains and penalty of perjury.
Oh, I didn't have that part.
Well, welcome.
And next, number four is the seating of the board chair and oath of office and then the seating of the vice chair. Our, the process has been that the vice chair is in line to be chair in keeping with our rotation of doing North Berwick, Berwick, Lebanon. And our vice chair is not here, but she is aware of the responsibilities and I believe is willing to accept that.
Do you want a motion to nominate?
Motion, yes.
Nancy for the chair position. So moved.
Seconded. Seconded. All in favor?
Well done.
Discussion.
Discussion, yep.
She does not have to be present to accept this nomination. I mean, board chair is big and we're not here to hear her affirmation.
She emailed, so she had a death in the family and she did email that she understands that this is the process and she would gladly serve as chair.
Okay.
Yep. So.
Another, another, oh, hi.
Yeah, sure.
If anyone else has questions, please go ahead.
No, I was gonna say.
How long has it been rotating amongst the towns? Is that like, uh, is that a recent practice or?
Very beginning. For all the 22 years that I've been here, it's rotated through the towns, yeah. Each year.
Which seems so odd to just follow past president because it's been done that way.
Well, I think it's, um, it's, one of the things about the district that I think is unique is that they've always looked at the three towns in an equal measure. And so always thinking about, so many districts, if you go to Mesobesic, the, the boards have weighted, like each person is a weighted vote. So it's not white. So if you're from Alfred, you have less weight than if you're from Otterboro. So we have had this blessing, honestly, of having an equal board. Three people from each town weighted in a, in a very equal way. So there's no, it just, it, it has provided a good positive sort of like relationship between the three towns most of the time. So that's why it's happened that way. And I think that the rotation has always been something that has been upheld just because they thought it was good. What do we want to call that? It's like, you know, good practice across the board. You have the right as a board to change that. So if you want to have discussion about that, that's absolutely acceptable to talk about.
Just the general, yeah. Chair is a huge responsibility and not, not all people, number one, want it, not all people, number two, are good at it. You know, and, and, and so some people are just, they, they just are more effective chairs than others. And, and I worry that the rotation just like, yeah, yeah, well, it's gotta be, it's gotta be this. Uh, that's the way it goes. And sometimes, you know, uh, vice isn't always the, the best person for that seat. So I, so I, those are just some of my questions and statements.
Yeah.
I'll also have some other things for.
So historic, like historically, we had one time, sort of recently, where there was a discussion about a vice chair who wasn't necessarily comfortable moving into the chair and they, they wouldn't have needed to. Like to your point, like Nancy understood this and, and would graciously step into this role. But if it was somebody who wasn't comfortable with it or didn't feel that it was a good match, we're not, you know, we don't need to do that either. So, yeah.
This, this changes yearly? It does.
yearly.
Okay. So, and there are boards that don't do that. If you're Acton, um, that board chair has been in that role for, I don't know.
I don't think that's gonna be it.
Long time.
Yeah.
Super long time. But again, single, single town.
Yeah.
That kind of thing. So you, there is no, um, there's no rule. It's just been something that has been, um, very much something that the district's leaders actually in the past, the board themselves have said, like, let's, let's, I guess.
I think it works well to spread power, share power. I think it works really well.
And in terms of Nancy, she has been chair in the past and did an admirable job. She was a very strong leader. I feel very comfortable saying she should, you know, that's, it seems reasonable.
She's willing to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you know, you also can nominate another person.
Yep.
So you have that, you know, you have that capability as well.
Yep. Good.
Are we, we've made the?
I moved to close nominations.
Pardon me?
I moved to close nominations.
Okay. All in favor?
What do you want me to know? Okay, thank you. No, I just, like, we moved to close and I'm just, you know, I'm trying to.
So which brings us to, and she's obviously getting sworn in today.
Sworn in.
At the next meeting.
Uh, seating of the vice chair and keeping with that noble, it would be someone from, uh, North Berwick.
I'm moved to nominate Kate Whelan, if you would accept.
Thank you. I'll second. I'll, uh, discussion. Or other. Okay. Uh, I'll in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to pain and suffering. Here we go.
And Kate, there's no swearing in for the vice chair.
No?
No.
You just say yes.
Yes, that's why. Your bonus is that you can become chair right for tonight.
Right tonight. Because Elva is ready to step down. Where's that baton? No, you skewered out to that.
Okay, so.
We will, we will give support.
Okay. So you have an agenda? You are onto, onto five?
Onto five.
You've got your, your agenda.
And thank you, Elva, for your.
Yes, yes. Yes, very much.
A wonderful chair. Thank you. So, five minutes of June 20th, and I believe, go ahead. Question?
I, I, I move that we tabled the minutes of June 20th. We, we received them just recently and we need more time to review them.
Okay, thank you. Ed, do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Oh, I can second that.
I just had to. May I have a quick discussion? Just side note, because I forgot about this until, and granted it was still like three o'clock or whatever. But don't forget that, um, the agenda, always check the agenda to see if there's a link. Because the link, even though we didn't get the email for them, the link was hot with the minutes. So, and there's a lot of documents, especially for newcomers. There's a lot of like links within the agenda, um, so we can get to different documents and see different documents that we don't always get emailed to ourselves. So if you do see the blue, definitely click on it and see what that is.
All in favor of, uh, tabling then? So moved. And we added 5A?
We did.
Yes. Sorry. It's a discussion about consolidation.
Okay. So I believe that Josh brought up a point, uh, that we needed to talk about consolidation.
I think it was actually Ms. Basco who said so, but it's fine.
Okay. Yeah. And, uh, so let's open the floor up. Could you give us a little bit of grounding in terms of what your thoughts are?
Okay. Um, so reviewing, reviewing what the decision was. It puts, it puts four specials at, um.
Mary Heard.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Which is, which is high school level. All of those specials are available at the high school. Art, PE, STEM, and world language. So, so for 19 students, you've given all those resources to 19 students that already have those resources available to them at the high school.
At the high school, right. But not at Mary Heard, per se.
They're high school students.
Right. So they could, are you saying they could go to the high school?
Yes.
Those services?
Yes. From what I understand from visiting over there last year is that they do have transportation. There is transportation that they could go to the high school. If they wanted a PE class or they wanted an art class, they could get transportation from the, from there to the high school.
So Sue or Audra, do you want to, uh?
You can talk a little bit about, about that. Yeah. So there are times when students from MHA come over to the high school and it's when they, um, as we do for all of our, our programs that are more involved, we pick a, a period of time when, when we feel that there's going to be great success and, um, go slowly and move into that, that class or whatever that, that is, that program or that class. And we go slowly with that. What administration, what we've all realized in looking at, when we've looked at enrichment and looked at the schedules, MHA does not have the accessibility to have specials, these four specials. And that's why it was discussed and recommended to add them so that the, the teacher is going to the building rather than the students coming out and attending the high school. Some, um, of the students that are at MHA, um, aren't necessarily ready to come back to the high school. Part of what they're working on over there is coming back to the high school. But, um, they're not participating in the specials here. So it was providing an opportunity, an equal opportunity for our students to receive those, um, those particular specials at MHA in working with some of the things, some of the project-based learning that they're doing.
But we're talking art and we're talking about PE. Then those two, oh, really all of them, but you're talking single strand. Okay, you're talking about, about A class where they, where they may not necessarily be able to be comfortable in the high school setting. Which may be why they're at Mary Heard. But going to A class is a different story than being surrounded with that many people, per se.
That would be quite a bit of going back and forth, though. And if, if there's students that have disruptive or behavioral issues, I think that would aggravate it probably more than support.
I know, I think I have seconded that sentiment because I'm feeling like those are kind of the most at, at risk as far as our population of students goes. I don't see how, you know, 40-minute round trip bus ride is going to help them with their overall day. So that could be best put toward educating them more for about 40 minutes or however long it takes.
Well, and to speak on those two specifically, and Sue and Audra, correct me if I'm wrong, but they are already getting gym. That's not something new.
Correct.
And the art was new this year, but that was because a teacher stumbled upon a local artist who volunteered their time. And then I think it was discovered that like there was actually quite a bit of interest and these kids weren't previously taking advantage of that by going to the high school for this. They didn't know the interest until this happened and there was definitely interest in it. Is that my? That's, that's accurate, yeah.
Is there a reason why this wasn't addressed in the original proposal for the Mary Heard budget?
Way back when Mary Heard opened?
No, in terms of like just this year.
This year.
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't have a good answer for that question, Kate, to be honest with you. I think that we were looking at when, um, when the funding was put back into play, I think we really sat down with the administrative team and said, okay, where, where is this going to be the most impactful? And so that was part of that conversation was like, okay, we can see it in, um, a variety of places. And Mary Heard was just one of those that came through and thought it would be beneficial to.
And my sense was the budget wasn't exactly in a place where we were adding things initially.
But true to that, this was definitely additional.
Fill in until we had that. And then.
And on that note, I mean, if we added those in, the budget for MHA would be much greater. And then the discussion about is that financially feasible because of sending students out versus doing in-house? We're kind of at the line. And if we add these in, now we're over the line, right? And it becomes more fiscally responsible. And I'm only talking fiscally responsible. At least as part of the discussion is out versus in district. And, and that brings up a whole other can of worms. And so my, my interest isn't necessarily there, but I think that to bring that up as a, if it was in the MHA budget, it would have been a much harder conversation to say, we're now spending more than 40, we're spending, you know, 50, $60,000 per student in MHA and what about students coming in? And we had that conversation about wanting to get the students up to, up to 20, I think it's 28 is what we really want to get to MHA. And we're at 19 according to the last, um, public posting. I just, I, I, I think it's all important. One of the things that I was wondering about is like, did we, did we spend time defining enrichment opportunities? Like what are enrichment opportunities at the elementary level? What are enrichment opportunities at the middle school level? And what are enrichment opportunities at the high school level? And I guess I'm, I'm not as interested in the high school level because this doesn't necessarily impact the high school significantly. I mean, yes, the world language teacher does, I, I understand that. But I, but I think we're pretty familiar with the enrichment opportunities in the high school level. But are, I, we define enrichment opportunity, but are, do our elementary schools all offer the same enrichment opportunities now that we've distributed this $300,000?
They will. The recommendation from the administration to scale back was to keep things, to make things more equitable. Now that the $300,000 was put back in, we have had to look at what does enrichment look like? And how can each of our schools have enrichment? But that initial recommendation was because enrichment was happening because there was extra time. So it was trying to fill time. And so we've worked with the administrative team on what is enrichment. So for example, in North Berwick, um, the librarian did run a history club during like a lunch and recess time. The other schools didn't have that opportunity. So that was considered an enrichment piece, like more, like we're looking at it more like clubs that would hit a recess or a lunchtime or as buses are arriving in the morning. Because sometimes it takes, you know, 15, 20, 30 minutes to get all of the buses in. So that's what we're kind of looking at as enrichment or club time. So that, you know, like an advanced art class for students who may be interested. Or, you know, like having the PE teacher do some really good work out at recess about how to play games. And, you know, not just games in the gym that you would cover for your standards, you know, but also just how to go out and play those games that, that we do not necessarily, um, you know, have taught, you know, as we did in the past. So those are what we are considering enrichment. As war, uh, as far as world language goes, what we're talking about is just, um, at the elementary level, looking at it as far as talking about different cultures, like using it more as a, a foundation for the work on, you know, like through food, we were talking about like through food prepa, preparation. You, oh, you know, like there's a lot to do and there's a lot to bring in when you're talking about different kinds of foods and different kinds of traditions and things like that. So, so that was the lens with which we were looking at for, for that piece, for, for world language.
We can say with the, with the consolidation that this, that happened on June 20th, we can say that all elementary schools now have the same enrichment opportunities. They, all students have access to the same enrichment opportunities.
I'm going to say we haven't nailed it that far down because we, what we're having an issue with right now is the application pool for the world language piece, um, is not as robust as it, we're hoping that it could be. So we're extending that advertisement out for a little while. And then at the, at the lower levels, it's going to look a little different than at the upper levels. You know, like fifth grade may look a little different than kindergarten, especially if you're talking world language. Because that's where we were trying to look at putting in some four, five, some exposure at four, five versus a kindergarten and one. So, so just by grade, it may look different, but we're trying to get more alignment with what, what that enrichment is.
In each town.
In each town. So that it's more consistent in, in each town. Sure.
Are you aligning it by enrichment periods or are you aligning it by enrichment type?
Are we getting? A combination.
So are each school going to get the same amount of art, phys ed, STEAM?
That's what, that's what the administration is working on.
So when we finally get a final option, we should have?
Yes.
That to look at?
Yes. Yeah.
Can I ask a question? I said this, uh, I walked up with a group of parents last week and we were talking about option one versus option two. And I said, and this was my take, is that option one was really a half-time art teacher. Option two is a full-time art teacher. So the funds were voted for the full-time, but realistically, because they were sharing a ton of amazing alternative ideas to this. I mean, this is like the work you guys have already done is great. And I said, email, like really the only, like, are we over-managing you guys? I guess is my question. Like we said, yes, you can, like, yes, we say a full-time art teacher instead of a halftime. But like, at what point, like, are we saying yes to that? And then you do your job of like making sure this is a fair schedule for all the kids and like use this money to put towards that. And like, know that this could be evolving. This looks great on paper, but two months in, you can be like, this is really just not, like, we got to reconfigure. Like, like I just want to make sure we're not over-managing you guys doing this because it's already a hard enough task. And then like, is that?
That's appreciated.
Yeah. I think that at the. Because every option C and D that someone all of a sudden looks at this is like, oh, my gosh, like, we could do this with it. And they're like, all fourth grade would have this and all, like, across the district and. And I think at the last meeting, we talked about like that we need to reevaluate, like, we're, we're going to get into this. Look at it September, October. Yeah. Look at, like, is this, is this feasible? Is it working? Is, because it is a development. This is something that, um, we haven't been able to do across the board. So, um, maybe, you know, in terms of that. But on, on its, every, there's a lot of focus on this. So it's important that you have a good understanding or at least a good input to give us.
And we also wanted to, um, you know, the administrative team have taught, has talked about it in terms of the entire building schedules. You know, like what's feasible within the boundaries of that. But the conversations with the specialists has not yet happened because, you know, we're still working on hiring the art teacher. We're still, you know, trying to refine some of that. So for the last conversation at the board level was, you know, bringing administration and the teachers together to come up with, you know, what, how, how is it going to look in each school and each town? But the first step was really to, to see where the capacity was within the building schedules. And the schedules were all done. So they have to revamp a lot. So, so we're taking those steps.
Been met today, actually.
Yeah, we did. We met for, for quite a while, so, yeah.
Have you had any kind of feedback from the affected specialist in terms of their desire to stay on or, or not? Have people expressed, you know, if this is the way it's going to be, I don't want to be here or?
I think the only one, um, person that we had heard from was one of the teachers who was on the rest.
Okay.
And who, um, was, accepted a position somewhere else.
Okay.
For this whole way through. But everybody else, um, is, is, is staying.
Is staying. Okay, well, that's good. That's goodness.
I think my, my concern generally comes from during the budget process, we found out huge inequity.
Yes.
And I would describe it as inequity. A true definition of inequity, it was unfair. And we corrected it.
Yes.
Through the process. And so as we look to implement something right here, I, I am concerned that, that we eliminated inequity and it, we have to just be sure. So I, I appreciate the over-management, but like, I haven't seen any documentation to show like all our elementary schools showing exactly what enrichment activities, what grade levels are affected, to be able to then say to, to anyone else, like, look, no. We, we have advocated for it to be as the same as possible, right? As humanly possible across a district, understanding that there are schedules and all that. My other thing is, is just a, um, a question along the lines of as we add enrichment, there's a, there's only so much time in a school day. We have a seesaw thing, right? So we have, we have our instructional program, our general instructional program, which we would talk about ELA, mathematics, science, right? Core areas. As we add enrichment time, it's a seesaw thing. You add enrichment this side or, or like it's a, we're losing instructional time. So has there been discussion at the district level about, is there any concern from administration? I mean, we know what, we know what numbers say about our students' results. Are there any concerns that we're adding enrichment time, which means we're going to lose instructional time? We, we have to at least say that's true.
That's, I disagree with that. Having a kid who was in one of those enrichment clubs, no. Oh, my gosh, the learning that he did in history club, like, he, he taught his class. He created a whole PowerPoint presentation, taught his class, the books, the extra books he got to take home because he was in this club, like.
And he did this during recess, lunch.
Cause yeah, some, I, I don't know the exact time to give it to be honest. But, I mean, and it was once, once a week, once every other week. But I, for that specifically, I would say the learning opportunity was, like, he gained a lot.
Oh, sure.
And the group of kids, and the big group of kids.
I think it's important, sorry, but just, I mean, I think really finding like the research-based evidence that supports this. And as I know anecdotally, like I have a child that did tremendously well with, um, extra classes and clubs. But I do think it's like obviously necessary to back that up with statistics. And we can always dive deeper into the effects of things like music, um, and their impact on math scores and, you know, things of that nature. Maybe we can just delve a little deeper in.
I think the, the challenge has, so two parts is when the administrative team brought this up as, as, um, part of the budget process. The concern was the inequity, but also to your point, the seesaw. And we're, we don't want to pull children out of our core subjects, which is why we're starting those conversations about what's, you know, like, when can we pull them? Is it lunch and recess? Is it during that block in the morning when the buses are coming in and there's just a little, little bit of lag time? So it's a bigger car, it's a logistical conversation because you're talking about a few people and several buildings. So it's an ongoing conversation. And I think that on the 20th, I believe that the vote was made so that we could at least move ahead with a direction. Because if it wasn't to go with enrichment, then we would be hiring differently than what we're hiring. Or we would be hiring a, um, a world language teacher differently than how we were going to hire. So I think it was giving permission for the administration to move ahead in hiring. Primarily, I think that was the big focus. And I, you know, and I, even this morning when we were meeting with the principals, there was a strong belief and desire to make sure that our students at MHA received support. Right? Yeah. Especially because we're moving into, um, some, just some really great activities. Like they're doing a whole, you know, quarter per, um, unit of study on erosion. And just talking about how much art could lend into that and what you can do with STEAM within erosion, erosion and just some of those pieces. And it was very exciting to kind of, you know, have, have us all listen and hear and participate in that discussion.
What, what worries me, um, one of my big worries is that we are trying to fly a plane as we're building it. And this is such a huge impact. You're talking four elementary schools, MHA, you know, like a huge impact across our district, working with a lot of different people. I know what it's like to do that in a school system and to do it in two months, like, it scares me. Holy scares me. So I, I just, I mean, to spend money, just to spend money, just, I, I, I just, I just have a really hard time without being able to like, see, I understand administration's desire to want to move and hire these people in order to do this. But it's. see, I understand administration's desire to want to move and hire these people in order to do this, but it's not, it's not designed yet. It's not fully designed out, thrashed out, many people commenting on all that, it's not there yet and we're just going to put it out there anyways. I'm worried about that, I'm worried, I I don't know, you know, so I'll shift from that and and talk about a little bit MHA. So we have nineteen students at MHA and we're gonna send a teacher over, as I understand it, all day for nineteen students, all day? Do we have that scenario anywhere else in our district where a teacher works all day for nineteen students? Aside from MHA being an alternative education setting, I get that, but any and any other expressive arts, expressive arts teacher, specials teacher in our district working with nineteen students all day long?
The way that the sk- I I'll answer that and say no. The way that the schedule will work is that they will go in small groups and work with that um the specialist, similarly to how they worked with the artist that came in this this year and similarly how to how they've been working with the PE teacher this year as well. So it's not that the specialist is gonna be working straight across six and a half, seven hours with the whole nineteen students, it's gonna be small groups so that there's going to be a lot of one on one support and a lot of looking at IEPs and working through the IEPs, meeting the goals through the IEPs with with how they're teaching, so that's, that's how that's going to that's how that will look.
I think my last question right now is, is there any, is there any um data, whether it's here in this district, regionally or being statewide of um success rates for world language being taught in an alternative education setting?
We haven't pulled any, we can certainly look for some, yeah.
Would our commitment to deliver on a student's IEP be impacted if we did not do this?
No, no, because like if there's an occupational therapy goal that can be, you know, that can be addressed through PE, but it cannot the PE teacher can help support the occupational therapy goal, but the occupational therapist would deliver services.
Got it.
So it's the extension of the of the of the goal.
Okay, thank you.
And I I think what I would say to the point about building the plane, you know, building it as we go, I I appreciate that statement, but I also know that we've got very um administrators and staff that really know the buildings and know the the students and know this, you know, know know the ins and outs and the intricacies. And while it's only two months, it's two months. You know, I I feel like we're going to get a lot of movement and some, you know, good planning done for that time. But does that mean it's gonna be perfect? No, you know, because it's our first, it's the first go through with this. And and we had to shift our mindset when the money was put back in. You know, because we, the the principals had had moved ahead with their teams and made schedules and plans for the amount of students and staff and had to go back and revisit it all, so.
And and I mean, technically, it is our decision, we didn't have to tell all those administrators to redo their schedules, didn't have to, not by law. That's that's our responsibility as a board and we know why we eliminated those funds and for every reason, we weren't able to communicate that correctly, right? Now we've just put this huge, huge endeavor, a very difficult endeavor. I I think I I just feel it was uh I I've I've said, I've said my piece, um I yeah, I mean, I'm I'm hoping that we're gonna get a report soon as to the 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 impact, exactly what each what each school was going to look like. Uh you know, what what do expressive art periods even look like? I don't even know how many expressive arts periods are in elementary schools, is that even impacted this? Or is it completely not associated with specials at our elementary schools? It just looks like MHA was left, we don't know what to do with this person, so we're going to spend, they're gonna spend a day at MHA, spec- specifically with the world language teacher. Um and it I this is just, this is just a really, this is a really difficult pill for me to swallow. That is one and a half percent significant change, we didn't have to do it. I understand if we wanna do it and take a year to plan it all out, great, that makes sense, okay.
Are some of the people who are impacted feeling that, feeling it, feeling it as that it's an opportunity to do something?
Yeah, we do have some.
You know, I guess this is the other question.
We have some.
Are they viewing it that in that way?
Right, right, we do have some um that are going to be going to MHA that have been wanting to experience an upper grade level. Or a longer term project or um proficient, you know, some some different programming. So for those purposes, you know, like Jamie Fridscham, who's the PE teacher that will be there, had been talking with Josie Chadbourne about doing some work on the ropes courses over at MH, you know, at the at the elementary school. So going over, bringing the students outside and and doing some of that work, so more of those community kind of things as well, so um.
Have any of the administrators expressed to you that they're overwhelmed with this and it's not helpful?
They they're not overwhelmed, they feel like they made a recommendation which was in the best interests of the students and our district and are now reevaluating that and and working to put this back in.
And we don't really have an option about accepting that into the budget, we have to do something with that money.
We do, you do not have to, that could, uh it is an option for the board to consider that that goes in undesignated reserves. The board can make that decision, that is an option on the table, which wasn't an option presented to the school board. It was only provided options of like, oh, we can allocate staff this way, we can allocate staff, one of the options was to say, you know what, we've charged our administration to do something through the budget process, it's going into designated reserves. Understand that we're gonna take a year to plan it all out and then part of the budget process, we know it's in there and now we can make it happen and then you're building the plane before you fly it and and you get, you you have time and you actually talk about it, I think the best best plans, the best programs that are built are the ones that they actually go through the process slowly and deliberately, you know, the the other, the other thing is, we we I I know I asked for some, just the impact, but also I wanna know how core programming is being affected, if at all, that is an important question, like literally minutes, are are minutes of core program being affected?
Okay.
I want, I just question back because I I don't know the answer, but when you say to use a year or whatnot to make that kind of a decision, we decided in two weeks as a board to use, I forget how much money from flex to put into the middle school for a behavior program, that was cut, that came with two weeks, that plan that we said, okay, so this has been over a month, if not more, with more time to implement, so I guess my, I don't, I'm confused as why two weeks is okay for one for a significant lump sum of money versus this with flexibility, knowing this is just one position versus three positions, this is one position with a lot of flexibility of like how to utilize it, I guess it's like a
I think it goes back to the discussion we had is that we were concerned about closing flex and and what kind of um those students are gonna go back to the middle school. What kind of supports would they have? And so we we took that money from flex and said we want the middle school to make sure that they are addressing systematically, now now finances can't be the issue, right? Addressing systematically, that many of these students will be coming back in.
I guess my point is that was nine of us that said yes to that.
Yeah.
One sixty two sixty sixty, two hundred six, two about two hundred six thousand dollars, nine of us said yes to it, but we had how many hundred, more to more than two hundred people come out to say what to do with the three hundred thousand? So I also wanna like be careful and yes, we're the ones up here and it's our decisions at the end of the day, but I do want us to just be really cognizant of that fact when we're like thinking about this and the time for that decision and the amount of money.
I think in a climate where we're spending less per student than almost any other district in the area, it would be an egregious waste of three hundred thousand dollars to put it in reserves, honestly, um I think you can, it it's not gonna be perfect, but if we're thinking from the viewpoint of the child, I don't see how they could be at a disadvantage from having this program for a year, imperfect as it may be.
And Josh, great point, yeah. And and one thing I just wanted to say, we presented two scenarios because what we were hearing from the meeting prior to this meeting was that we wanted these scenarios because we wanted to um at least the, at that point, the the communication from the board was our community has spoken, they want us to look at how to build enrichment into other schools. And so that's why these two options were presented and not the third, so I wanted to just clarify that, it wasn't that we were omitting by choice, we were trying to adhere to what the what the feeling of the board was at that point.
Yeah, yeah, that makes a great point, if we took that money and said we're putting it in reserves, I think we'd have a full room of people here saying, what are you doing? That just would feel disingenuous.
There was a specific intent.
Right, yes.
And I feel like, I mean, maybe maybe I'm wrong on this, I mean, I don't, I don't, how many people are even in our three communities, like total? We, I don't even know.
How many families?
How how many, how many people population wise in our district?
Probably like twenty thousand.
Okay, twenty thousand, we had two hundred for numbers show up, I mean, that's one percent. Five percent, I don't, you know, we don't have to, but yeah, five percent spoke loudly, I I also know that there was strategic messaging, right, to strategic populations and like that was obvious, right, we see all that, there was a lot of people that were quite shocked, you know, at at that result, like I I it just, it's exaggeration, I just feel like things were slammed and like, you know, people will will say things like, were the, you know, lowest per student? We're not, we're not actually the lowest, I I I personally did the research on that and met with Denise and said, are these numbers right? And and she and I went through those numbers and and it wasn't, we were average. Could we improve? Yeah, sure, we can improve just like anybody else, but do we wanna be Old Orchard Beach at twenty six thousand dollars per student? Okay, what are we offering and what are what are taxes and if people are like, yeah, I wanna have the same tax rate as that, okay, but like there are bigger discussions and we spent, how many hours did we spend discussing so many things? And then I just feel like this is like ramrodded through, we didn't ramrod anything through that budget process. It was hard decisions, every single one of us moved, I think anyways, I mean, there were, there not just me, there were several board members who said they were not gonna vote if it was above six percent, and they voted for it at seven point four eight and then just kept on going.
Well, and the bottom line really here is, is the issue that really arose was the fact that he was eliminating a team. And a lot of people were really upset, I I had a teenager come chat with me about the fact that they were losing a team. We gave him the money back to retain that team and he decided to add three administrators and still eliminate that team. Then we gave him another, then we have another three hundred thousand. So we gave him that three hundred thousand to retain that team so that the class sizes would stay smaller and that's not what the principal chose to do, that's what we're losing sight of here. So that money got
Jerry, I think that's, that's, I think there's a combination here that's going on, so the three hundred thousand is specifically for this, for the, was specifically for the elementary folks. It wasn't related to the the middle school at all, that principle really was, but I, when we put the money back in for the middle school, there was a charge from the board about, take that money, it doesn't need to be the the team, it needs to be how is this going to impact in a positive way the the issues that we saw?
Behavior and bullying.
Right, yeah, so that, I mean, to be fair, I think that's, I think, but I mean, I remember Josh actually saying
Yes.
Here is the charge for you to you, um which I think that's what they were trying to do. Um but there are two very separate pieces there.
But that is where that stemmed from, was that initial, the it was it was three hundred thousand and it was a removal of a team at the middle school. That that is at the beginning of where that three hundred thousand began.
It it really isn't, like, it's very separate, like, the the money at the middle school and the specialist money is very separate.
Well, it is separate, but initially, initially eliminating that team would save the district three hundred thousand. That's the very beginning of the three hundred thousand. And and then there were long discussions during the budget, budget, to because there were, there were a lot of complaints, the fact that they were going to lose a team. So we agreed as a board to give him back the three hundred thousand so that he could retain the team or to do with what he chose and what he chose was three administrators.
They're not, they're not administrators, first of all, and it I I just have to agree to disagree because that is, that isn't actually that the way that went in terms of it and I don't, I don't think we need, I mean, we can go back and look at minutes and stuff if we need to, but I really do feel strongly that the conversation about the teaming was about reduction of unfortunately, our enrollments in our schools and that, like, the elementary schools had already had a reduction in staff and it's really just, the fact is, is that that enrollment has moved up to the middle school level and the numbers are smaller. And so a team was out, was able to be um reduced, that was the deal.
Yeah, and our conversations were clearly about addressing all of the concerns we've heard from parents about bullying and not, I I don't remember anything about putting the team back. It was about addressing the concerns that parents have for behaviors in that school.
Right, but making the tip, but making each one of those teams larger, the classrooms with more students. Because that that was a client I got, not only from the teenager, but from um teachers.
Look, he had the opportunity to do it the way that he saw it best fit with with So look forward to data throughout all next year to see, did it have the impact, is it reducing the behaviors, is it allowing for more instructional time, right? Is it allowing students to learn and and produce, like, that's what we're looking at and if if that decision bears fruit, wonderful.
Yeah.
I'm excited, you know, if the decision doesn't bear fruit, we, it's a different conversation that happens, right?
Yeah, exactly.
That's that's part of being an administrator.
Yeah.
Well, we were supposed to get permission.
You can speak.
Thank you. Um I'm trying to kind of put all of this together and kind of get back to what I remember it being. You came to the table and said, we have some teachers that are working two days a week and we need and teachers that are working three days a week and we have a problem, and I remember saying to you guys in the hall, oh, that's not gonna look good to the union because we have this discrepancy in pay. We needed to resolve that and the way you decided to resolve it was to consolidate the teams, saving the districts some money during a district budget teasing where there was a huge budget to be cut back on. Then we had that amendment of three hundred, am I so far so good? Three hundred thousand dollars was brought back to the table and less than two percent of the populate registered voters voted to increase the budget by three hundred thousand dollars and put back in place the very people that you were trying to get fairly salaried as well as working, now we're working for two, at one board meeting, three, this is the third board meeting that we are trying to figure out how to keep these people at a job when in fact, good fiscal responsibility would be saying, we're not gonna spend that three hundred thousand dollars cuz we don't have it. We don't need to spend it, we had the coverage. Norton School still has extra specials, I mean, all of these specials they had, they still have it looks like Huzzy smart and said, we don't want any more people in our school, we got plenty. Lebanon's crowded as it is with just the kids and getting their specials implemented into their schedule at the the timing. I wouldn't wanna be around when they say they've gotta pull kids back out for other stuff, but that's neither here, that's your problem, not mine. Um North Grewick has two days of art according to option two, which I thought was a little bit weird that we'd have two days of art. So I still, I, as a new board member, I just think that we really need to think long and hard about how this is gonna impact core curriculum. We have average uh student ratio, student costs. We know that York pays a lot more for their kids, but they don't have any better scores than we do, but we do have problems with our reading and math scores. And I think we need to really be looking at implementing help in reading and math, whether it's through art and phys ed, I don't know, or music, but we need to get those grades going and not worried so much about, I love enrichment. I loved it as a teacher, take them, but it's not the best way to get our reading and our math and our science education corrected if we keep spending money that we don't have and on our our programs that are wonderful, absolutely wonderful, there's nobody gonna say they're not wonderful. But right now, maybe not be the right time to do it, we may need to take that time that we need for ed, for academics and cut back a little bit on the the special, we have art, music, phys ed, steam, library, second step, and now you wanna add another however many. That's a lot to try to squeeze into a schedule right now anyway. Not my job, but I just wanted to say, this is my concern, so bringing it forward.
So a lot of things, a lot of different opinions, a lot of things um consider. What were you looking for, Jerry, when you brought this forward in terms of what kind of an action or result did you want to happen? In terms of a vote of the board or?
Well, I wanted more of a discussion because it was like, it it felt more like throwing darts.
Well, I wanted more of a discussion because it was like, it, it felt more like throwing darts. You know, it, it, it didn't feel, it didn't feel equitable. Okay, like, there, there was a fair distribution or that it really even needed to be spent because we, we had that discussion that it wasn't something that had to be spent this year. It could go into an. Thank you, yeah. I, it's unassigned, and, and, but, you know, anyway, it, it could sit there for a year until there was a decision about how best to serve the kids. You know, it, it doesn't have to go into specials, it doesn't have to, there's, there's no hard, hard rock thing that has to happen yet. You know, it doesn't have to happen this year, it could happen next year. But it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily have to happen this year. That, that was, that even came out in the meeting when there were two hundred plus people in the room.
Sue and Audra, when, when do you think it would be feasible, practical to come back to the board with a uh, more detailed fleshed out plan?
We could do that for the next meeting, which is in August.
Do you, you had something to say?
So I think, um, I mean, we, we have to recognize, we took up one point six million out of designated reserve to balance the budget, right? To, to bring the, the percent down, right? I don't, I haven't, if we didn't take any money out of designated reserves, I have no idea what the percentage would be, but you're talking one point six million. Right, we, we did do that, we took out one point six million from designated reserves to do that. I know we had to take out some money from designated reserves, but I know we didn't have to go one point six million. Um, and then the other thing is I, I, I do know, just because I asked, like, the only way that this can be reconsidered that I know of, right? Is if board members who voted in affirmative of, of that plan on June twentieth, move to reconsider the vote. That's, that's, that's all I know. So this whole discussion, in my opinion, has been, do we actually have all of the answers to all the questions that we've asked? Are we truly comfortable with, with the current plan or with what we hope the plan will be? Spend three hundred thousand dollars this way? If that's still the case, okay, I mean, I, we, we've given time to, to express it. And the other thing I'd just say is like, when things are put in front of the board, we should follow our general practice. We do not vote on things presented to us in a meeting. Like, we, we, we have the discussion, we continue the discussion, then, then we vote in the follow-up meeting. I mean, that's, that has been our modus operandi and I would encourage us as a board to continue that, that, that way of operating. I think that that's respectful to our board members and our communities.
I feel like we said yes the night of for the world language. To, for you guys to go ahead and post.
You did, yeah.
Yeah, that was the same night, this isn't new practice, like, this is something, it's not, I guess, our practice has not, our practice has been, we don't just say like, hey, do you like this new logo for the district, like, let's vote tonight. There's a discussion about the logo, but then the night it's voted on often happens. So I think, I, my opinion is similar with this, we've discussed it for quite some time and it was literally like, I think the real vote was like a half-time art position or a full-time art position is what you guys needed to know to move forward with any of this, and that's what really the vote was. We had, I believe already as a board, been in the direction that we were using the funds as requested by the voters.
I think it's also like really important when we're talking about this three hundred thousand, we're talking about equality and all this. There's equal for everyone and then there's the proper equity for everybody. And when we're talking about our most at-risk student population, I think it's very, very important that they may receive something that visually looks unequal. Um, because of the fact that they are starting at a point of.
Inequity.
Inequity. So just proof of that.
Sue, can you bring up the, from the meeting?
I'm looking right now.
Thank you.
From the thirteenth?
Well, from, from the vote that we took on the twentieth, I think.
Yeah, let me look, hold on.
So I guess, Kate, to answer your question, I, I guess I'd like an option three to postpone for another year.
So the, there is, I think Josh brought up a good point in terms of like the question of overturning the vote that was taken on.
Yes.
Twenty, so let me look at that really quick to make sure that we have the language that we need. Okay.
Can I just add something while we're looking? I also feel that while we may be using this three hundred thousand in a way that some people feel is rushed, I think not using it is also equally as rushed. So not having, um, like, to what end are we not going to use this money? What numbers do you need to see before you are willing to invest more in each child's education? Um, so I think there's two sides to that coin.
I, I agree with you, Allison, and I also think part of this almost starting to feel like some micromanagement. We put the money in, we said what it's for and really getting into this nitty gritty of I want to have a say in exactly how that's administered is feeling a little.
We need like evidence-based, like returns, like Josh, you were saying, after this year, once it's been used in the way the principal says, let's look at the actual data and.
Even as it's flowing, you know, how are they flowing about it?
Are the administrators, administrators feeling like it's helpful, useful, working, not working?
Are the students?
Yeah.
Like time, we know what the time impact is going to be, right? So like, that's what we can look at and we don't, we don't have to wait, you know, three months to say, okay, likelihood that this is going to be successful. Just looking at time on this versus on this. Um, and we know our administrators already had plans without three thousand dollars. So we, we know that those existed, schedules and plans without it, so, um, yeah, the, the adding of three thousand is causing our administrative team as excited as they're saying, right? It's, it's ass new to them. Their plan was already without the three hundred thousand dollars, that's already in place. Or at least written, I don't want to say, I shouldn't say in place, it's already written, drafted, so.
So I feel like, as I'm looking at the minutes, um, that we actually, you as a board gave us permission to, um, post the advertisement for the world language position, not at the twentieth, but like at a meeting prior to.
Yes.
So that's not in this.
Right.
So the, this resolution was, or this motion was, and I tried to, um, I listened to it because at the time I was running the meeting, so I wasn't taking minutes like I typically do. So I listened to the meeting over and over again to try to consolidate it down. And what we had said basically was, um, Ms. Wheeler made the motion, second by Ms. Wheeler to approve the option two version of the plans. And I had put the specialist enrichment ideas in here, um, as a document. With more specific scheduling to be determined by the administration, teachers together with specific focus on equity of services as noticed by Ms. Janisak. And then there were the votes and, you know, there was, um, at that point, five in favor and two opposed. So that's the motion, the motion that went forward. Um, and I, I do, I mean, I understand, I do understand where you're coming from. I just, at some level, um, we need to move forward in whatever we're going to be doing, so help us, help us figure out.
If, if any of the five who voted in affirmative of that motion are not willing to make a motion to reconsider, then this is a moot point. This is done, I mean, that's the question.
Yeah, I am not.
The five that were in favor, any of the five that were in favor, if they're willing to, to put forward a motion to reconsider the, the vote, then like, okay, if it's, if it's not, then, then discussion is done, I, I mean, we got to move on.
Yeah, there's four of them here.
There's only four of us here.
Yeah.
That's, then that's the way it goes, right?
Yeah.
So if none of the.
But it's on record, and it's on record in terms of the conversation here, and I think that's important.
Okay. Jerry, are you okay? You, you, you feel like we did have a full discussion?
Well, we had a discussion.
Okay.
Fair, I mean, it's fair, right?
Fair.
Thank you for giving it time.
Yeah. It's important, these conversations are really important, like, across the board, as hard as they are.
And thank you for, thank you for bringing that up because if it was something that was bothering you, it's probably bothering other board members and constituents as well, so thank you for bringing that up.
I think in general, maybe some more like research for the board around, um, quantity of certain course study versus just quality and their effects on the ultimate test scores. If that's what our ultimate goals are, is to increase those. I mean, you can have as much as you want of core curriculum, but if you're not attracting the right teachers, then your students' grades aren't going to go up. So, um, and I would be hard pressed to find a school that is achieving those scores that does not have a really robust extras.
Great point.
Curriculum.
Thank you.
Finally, maybe.
Okay, moving on to the very exciting topic of the Lebanon Elementary Leach Field.
We just wanted to give a quick update. Um, we are still pumping, um, one, once a week, about five hundred, that's five hundred dollars as we're doing that. So simultaneous to that, um, civil consultants has been working to come up, we had a, a quote of about a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to really replace as it stands. Um, but what civil consultants is doing, um, is trying to pare down the quote to give us something more aligned for ten years, for a ten-year kind of plan, which would bide us some time, which would be, um, under the hundred twenty-five thousand. Um, Kevin's big concern with the, with continuing to pump is in the winter when it gets very cold and it freezes, like, he's like, I'm very concerned about having to make a phone call at two o'clock in the morning saying every, you know, Lebanon Elementary. So that's his concern. So he is thinking, just based on some conversations that he has had with civil consultants, with, with Neil Reposa, who has done a lot of work with us, um, is that it could come in around seventy-five thousand.
Oh, that's awesome.
Um, so to be, you know, we'll continue with more discussion, but I just wanted to give you that update because I wanted to just keep you abreast about the status of the weekly, um, way that we're handling that and that we have a, you know, hopefully a, a, a good stopgap.
And over the long haul, you know, the five hundred times weekly pumping is twenty-six thousand dollars. And if we were to do seventy-five thousand for a ten-year plan, basically, that probably makes more sense for us. It also gives us the time as we're trying to figure out next steps with our whole district plan.
We looked at all at like maybe some professionals in the area that are willing to donate some philanthropic services to Lebanon, because I know, I mean, we have a lot of people that work in that industry.
No, but I'm open to offers. I guess it's, you know, I mean, like, to be able to. Conversations.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah. So the Leach Field, the Leach Field has failed.
One of them.
So there's, right, okay, so there's two in that school.
Yes.
Okay, so they're pumping the tank.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So, yes.
So is it just the Leach Field that needs to be replaced or would they replace the entire system, the tank?
They're not going to replace the tanks, they would only.
So the tanks are okay?
Yeah, currently the tanks are okay.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I just need clarification because I don't understand this terminology.
That's okay.
Are we saying that the Lebanon schools have the possibility of being flooded by sewage?
Yeah.
That's what we're saying.
Okay.
One of them, okay.
Yeah.
One of them, there's two schools.
Yeah, it's the Lebanon Elementary. And one of the, yeah, pieces, yeah. Um, yeah, it's, yeah, it's not good.
For, in for context, right, it was just part of, part of the conversation is, am I correct in saying to bring Lebanon Elementary into compliance?
Yeah.
It's like seven million dollars.
Yes, it is a large sum of money to bring it up to.
Several years ago.
Yeah.
Three years ago, that was.
No, we're not, like, okay.
This is, so this just feeds into the facility study that we are contracting for so that we can actually look at a long-term plan for district-wide, figure out what's going to make the most.
That can't happen fast enough to alleviate the risk.
No, exactly, that's, that is, that's the problem. This is, this is, this is a long-term, um, plan that we need.
Do you know how long that's been in?
Uh, the Leach Field, the current Leach Field? Oh, I don't really know, Jerry.
Okay.
I, Kevin, if I called Kevin, he would know because he knows every little detail of that.
It was in that original proposal that we had had, but I don't.
Yeah, I remember.
How did it come to this? I mean, I know I'm like late to the game on this, but how does this happen to a school in?
It can, it can happen anywhere.
Yeah.
Your Leach bed can, can fail at any time, just depends on how well it's been maintained.
Maintained, right.
Yeah.
So there was.
But I think it's maintained very well.
Yeah.
So like, we're talking age.
It's age.
Age.
It's age.
Just age.
The building is the, yeah.
We should do another, we should do another round of building tours because that's just one of the issues there that I, and I would agree with you, Allison. I, I feel bad, the kids are going to school in that building.
There's a lot of trees in that area.
Yeah.
And the, um, transfer station isn't that far and it, it failed too because they, there's tree roots growing into it, so it could, it could have any, it could have to do with freeze. Depending on the location and bleach bed.
So I'm hearing that we want to do the tours, the building tours again.
Yeah.
I would appreciate that as a newbie.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, so we'll have more information when Kevin gets an official quote.
Yeah.
Awesome, okay, thank you, Audra. And next on the agenda is an employment update.
Okay, so we have a list of, um, hires that we, um, just kind of go through and still need the motion for each one.
Yep.
Um, and a second for each one and a vote. So, um, these are the nominated to you, um, staff, you know, for staff positions. So Emmanuel Holmes for Hanson School, grade one, and she, um, just graduated from Fitchburg State University. So we need a motion.
A move.
I'll second.
Thank you. Elva.
You got the second.
All year, yep, okay. Um, Samantha LaFave, who, um, is being nominated for the Nolton School Special Education Teacher Life Skills.
Yeah, hold on a second. I was going to stop her.
All those in favor?
Yeah, for Emmanuel, yeah.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Um, so Samantha LaFave, um.
Do we need to talk about Evan or are we skipping on purpose?
Oh, I don't have Evan on here.
I.
Oh, um.
Evan, I have down further.
Evan's further down for us, yeah, sorry.
I just want to make sure that's all, we're good, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
This does happen sometimes when we have a long list. So Samantha LaFave for Nolton School Special Education, the Life Skills Program. She graduated from Endicott College and has, um, her BCBA, um, which is Behavioral Interventionist. Um, and she's done some work in MSAD sixty with that, but she, um, really wants the Life Skills Position, so, so that's the nomination.
So moved.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Okay. Sarah Belestrow from North, uh, for North Berwick Elementary, grade four. Um, she has her master's in education from Merrimack College and was teaching recently in Havero Schools. She, um, recently moved up like two weeks ago to North Berwick. Um, so that's, that's the nomination.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Trying to keep it simple for you.
We appreciate it.
Claire Benning, Noble High School, Multiple Pathways Science, and she graduated from Worcester Polytechnic Institute.
So moved.
Good. Second. All in favor?
And then Danielle Duckworth for Special Education, Social Worker, grade six to eight. And she graduated from Antioch, I don't have any, you, did you interview?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, and then Evan Trace, uh, for Huzzy School Physical Education, um, has done some long-term subbing within the district, graduated from Regis College.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Jacob Mills for Noble Middle School Physical Education and graduated from Southern Maine and was recently at Sanford Middle School.
So moved.
I'll second. Okay, all in favor?
Okay, we have a few resignations and a leave of absence request and you may not have a resignation and a leave of absence request because we just received those. The first one is Shelley LaJoy, um, she is currently the guidance counselor, was currently the guidance counselor at Noble Middle, um, Noble High School. She's been here for twenty-three years and she accepted a position in Bitterford Middle School in the town that she works. So that's, that's that resignation.
We're going to beat up Mr. Dakota.
Yeah, except with regrets.
I'll second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
All right, the next one is Jason Demorato and he is asking for a one-year leave of absence. He has some personal things, um, that have come. that have come up recently, and so that is the reason for the request.
Move to accept.
Second. All in favor?
Okay, and the last one is Dana Landry, North Berwick Elementary School, and Dana is taking a position, would like to take a position in her hometown where she lives. So that is, so moved?
I'll second. All in favor?
All right, those are all of our employment things for this time.
And next on the agenda is the superintendent update.
Hey, we started our summer programming for our K-5 students this past Monday, and it went very well. We, you know, we always kind of get a rush that first day of transportation things and, oh, I thought my child was being picked up here, and it went very smooth this time. We didn't have concerns that way. We have kindergartners in, incoming kindergartners for kindergarten jumpstart. It's been nice to see them in. Our high school credit recovery program has been running for a couple of weeks and the school got out, and that's going very well. You know, good attendance, staff, you know, are saying that we have a lot of good activity going on, you know, students are participating and things like that. So that's one thing. The next thing is that, and I, I can't believe I'm saying this, but we're having, we are having our interim audit right now, and it feels like we just got done the audit. So we have the interim audit right now. It's been this week. And pretty much what the company, what our auditors are looking at right now is our internal control, so all of our processes. And, you know, we're pulling a lot of information, so that's been going on, should be completed tomorrow. What this interim piece does is then it feeds into the big part of the audit that starts in October. So they're looking at all those internal controls, then they're looking at all of our big financials coming up, and then they'll put it together for our audit piece. But nothing has come up right now that, that it's been like, oh, this, you know. And they're asking for a lot of information, so the office has just been very busy with that. This morning, we held a leadership panel here in this room. So we started in this room and we're ending in this room today. So we had what we've, similar to what we're seeing with teaching staff and support staff across Maine, we're seeing some, you know, leadership positions, you know, still not being filled, or some of the leadership programs in some of the colleges are having dwindling enrollment. So what we did was we put a panel together of some of our administrators and opened it up to all of our staff to come in and just hear about the different pathways to leadership and different options in the building to gain some leadership experience, you know, and how to participate in some of those and the different, again, like the different pathways some of our administrators took to get degrees and when, you know, when they felt like I want to be an administrator or, you know, and just breaking down some of those barriers about what it means to be an administrator, or what exactly is this job, or what is the technology, you know, department doing or things like that. So we had about 20, 20 of our staff in the audience, which was great. But we also had several staff reach out and just say like, oh, is this going to be recorded? Because I'm away, but I really wanted to participate and hear that. So Astacchio helped us with that this morning as well. So we had a lot of very positive feedback at the end of that. And just some additional feedback, like we should run this a couple of times a year, just so that, you know, not just in the summer, but just during the year, maybe after school or some other time, just so that we can just kind of keep that momentum going. So that was, that was good.
That's great.
Those are my updates. Do you want, we can talk a little bit about the RFP.
Oh, yeah, so the facilities, the facilities study RFP that went out, we were able to, we received two companies that were interested in working with us. One was Harriman Associates in the Brunswick area, and the other is BV, and they are down in Massachusetts, but they're kind of actually more midwestern-y located. So we are just kind of going through them piece by piece. We have not made a decision yet. They are, both of the companies are really, really good, and they've audited some reference checks on both of them to be sure that they provide what we're looking for. There's just, there is a difference between the proposals that were provided to us in terms of the depth of coverage, in terms of like how deep the community aspect of it, the facilities, overviews. So I'm actually working, I'm talking with both companies to be, to get it to a place of comparing apples to apples versus, so I'm trying to like strip it down to like, these are the things that we absolutely need. What is this going to look like for you if you do that? So we haven't made a final decision about that yet, and we'll bring it forward as soon as we.
So is this a facilities evaluation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. We've worked with Harriman in the past. So that's always feels good. Harriman actually built this building.
And Huzzy.
And Huzzy, yeah. But it's also good to get different perspectives. So that's, we were trying to, trying to tease it out the best again.
Thank you. Okay, so at this point, we'd ask if anyone in the audience would like to have a public input?
Sean works North Berwick. I apologize for the not just the bright colors. Hey, you suck at programs. I apologize for anyone that didn't have sunglasses. In the past, we'd talked about getting the important, getting in the important date section, getting the list of the meetings and possibly describing who, what's the executive session, what has public input, things like that. We started off good. We had June 10th. Unfortunately, we still just have June 10th on there. That mean paid. If we could, again, I thank Kate and I think a few other people that are posting on Facebook and things like that, announcing that, but if we could, we have the central location that we've kind of taught people to go to, to look at. If we can continue that, that would be really helpful. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Anyone else have any public input?
Joe Forte, North Berwick. Just like to express my consternation with the fact that the consolidation was not put on the agenda and was added last minute. And there was a substantial bipartisan series of votes by the three towns where hundreds of people spoke up saying that they wanted that $300,000 put back in and to be used for a specific purpose. And yet, we're trying to pull a fast one on everybody. Trying to say that only 2% of the people actually expressed their opinion on this. It was overwhelming. It was like a landslide. So if the consolidation is going to come up again, I greatly appreciate it, and I know all those people would appreciate it if it would be on the agenda so that we could be here to express our opinions about it. And thank you to all of you who spoke up in favor of what the people of these three towns clearly want to.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
We have an executive session.
Oh, sorry.
I make a motion to go into executive session. One MRS A4056A. So no more stuff that you have to worry about. We'll be stuck, talked about.